It's 9:39. I'm going to call this meeting of the State Board of Education, a special meeting to order, to continue the process of learning more about some terrific candidates for superintendent. It occurred to me, this is not Groundhog Day. We can't feel that way. We're not going to be seeing the same movie. We're going to be seeing a very different movie with different people and we have to be bright-eyed and bushy-tailed and alert to new ideas, new experiences, and that we'll be doing the similar thing that we did yesterday. So we've got three terrific people yesterday. We've got three great people today. And then we're going to try at the end of the day to see if we can come to grips with what it means and see if we can advance to some next stages in terms of some finalists. But we'll take it as it comes. So we are very lucky to have today Randy Davis, who is the Superintendent of Marshall Schools. And I'm going to introduce him more fully in a minute, but first I need a motion to approve the agenda and order priority.
Who?
The board.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And Marilyn, would you introduce the board as we usually do for the sake of our forum and for our guests?
Yes. This is John Austin, President of the Board, and he's from Ann Arbor. Cassandra Alberich, as we go around the table to the left, she's the Board's Vice President. She's from Rochester Hills. And Michelle Fecto is the Board's Secretary, and she's from Detroit. Richard Zilee, Board Member from Dearborn. Melody Arabu, she is the current Teacher of the Year, who sits at the Board Table. And she's from Keith Elementary in Wald Lake Consolidated School District. And as we go across the table, Eileen Weiser, she's from Ann Arbor, Board Member. And then next to her, you will see Kathleen Strauss in a minute, Board Member from Detroit. And then Lupe Ramos Montini, she's Board Member, NASB delegate from, excuse me, NASB delegate from Grand Rapids. And next to me is Pamela Pugh Smith. She's from Saginaw, and she's the Board's Treasurer. Thank you.
And we're delighted that Richard is with us physically today, though he watched all the sessions yesterday and is well-informed. And I know Karen McPhee, the Governor's Education Policy Advisor, also has been tuning in and is going to join us later today. And thanks, Melody, for being here. And I hope you appreciate we're not allowing you to play a formal role, but your perspective and advice is always welcome in this. So as we're going to do what we did yesterday, Randy, you wouldn't be here if you weren't one of the 50 or so that we got down to six who are very well-qualified and appear to have some real gifts that could help us do what we need to do, and that's work together and work effectively to improve education achievement. So as we did yesterday, invite you to take 15 minutes or so to tell us about yourself and why you're interested, but also to address these first two questions that we've sent in advance to all the candidates. Tell us something specifically about the major things we need to do to improve student performance in Michigan and make it an educational leader in the nation, and describe what you will do to ensure that the Superintendent of Public Instruction, the Board of Education are effective in making educational progress in Michigan. And then we'll ask you 20 more questions and talk more together. Thanks, Randy.
Great. We had a great conversation. I've got to tell you, I am so honored to be at the table. Thank you for inviting me for the interview. This is really important to me. To give you my story, I'm a non-traditional candidate. I'm not cut from the same cloth of superintendents that'll probably be sitting in front of you. I traveled a different path to get here. This has not been something that I thought I was going to be pursuing. It's more about what I've been trying to do in trying to improve education for students. So let me give you a little taste of the journey that I've taken to get here to this seat today. I was raised with three other brothers and sisters in a two-parent household in a middle-class world. We were all expected to go to college for the time that we, you know, I was walking, I think. And we relocated down to South Carolina, I think the year that President Kennedy was assassinated. And lived in South Carolina for nine years during the Civil Rights Movement, and then came back up about the same year that Reverend Martin Luther King was assassinated, to Ohio. I say that because I want to impress upon you some experiences I had early on about equity. I saw the pain of segregation firsthand in Aiken, South Carolina. I saw the effects and the dehumanizing of Jim Crow laws through the eyes of kids that I went to school with and went to church with. And I knew that in that experience has embedded in me the importance of equity and what I can do to create equity across the board in my life. With that, and through high school and college, I knew I wanted to work with young people. Immediately went to work at Star Commonwealth right out of college. I was a youth specialist and then became a group leader, then became a family therapist, and I consider myself still a family therapist by trade. I'm a systems thinker. I see the world through systems. Anytime I have a challenge, I think about the impact that's going to have on all parts of the equation before I make a decision to move forward. I was asked in 1988 to start a brand-new, new design program with service delivery called a Continuum of Care on Joy Road in Laverne, a little bit in the trenches in Detroit. And we implemented a brand-new program there to serve adjudicated and neglected youth on the streets of Detroit in 1988, which was a real violent time for kids that were wrapped up in the drug gangs and so forth. In fact, I lost 13 kids to violence in the first two years we operated. And I've got to tell you that Maurice and Dewan never got to see graduation. They never got to get off the streets of Detroit. But, you know, I have successes about a young man named Chris that went on to own three franchises of McDonald's restaurants and is doing very well. And so what I found about that is resilience was incredibly important. Personal courage is incredibly important. Taking and seizing the moment to touch the lives of kids whenever you have the opportunity is incredibly important to me. After that, I was called back to the main campus to take a central administrative position as Director of Research and Evaluation. I oversaw the continuous quality improvement process for 39 programs and services we offered across two states, Michigan and Ohio, and across nine campuses. And the whole point of that was to help our organization know how to use data, how to inform our practices, and how to improve practices, identify best practices, and be able to replicate those across the board. That was a pretty involved program. I was doing that, finishing my doctorate at the same time, decided that I wanted to do some consulting, took my perspective on continuous quality improvement, welcome Kathleen, and took that to a consulting role and got a great opportunity to work with the country of Denmark and their Ministry of Social Affairs. The whole point with Denmark is they weren't measuring or monitoring quantitatively or qualitatively their services for young people. And so I worked with three main trade unions across their country, over a couple thousand social pedagogues or social workers, to help them understand the importance of measurement, the importance of tracking what you do, the importance of knowing what you do, and how effective it is and how you can replicate that. Coming back and finishing my doctorate, I knew that I wanted to flip the coin from intervention to prevention, and I really wanted to get into public education because true prevention is public education. Early childhood especially, but public education prevents those dysfunctions that you have to deal with later on in life that would bring therapists and so forth and interventionists into your home. With that, I took a job as Vice President and COO of Starfish Family Services in Inkster, Garden City, La Vonaia, and Wayne Westland. We had a really great opportunity to build a family success model with economically disadvantaged families. We ran Head Start, Early Head Start, Eva Start, Great Start, After the Baby Comes, all these different programs. But my whole focus was how we get kids school-ready and how we get kids into the schools successfully. And after that, a position became available in my hometown where I'd moved my family as Director of Research and Evaluation in Athens, Michigan, a little pocket of excellence south of Battle Creek. And that position became available for district superintendent. And so I went down and took a risk. My wife, who's been an educator for 30 years, said they're not going to give you a shot. And I interviewed and convinced them that I was the right person for the job. Thankfully, they took the risk of hiring this non-traditional superintendent, and I haven't looked back since. I mean, every day as a superintendent has been a wonderful day. Minutes might be questionable, but every day is a wonderful day in servicing our kids and community in this way. So I brought a non-traditional perspective into a traditional school system. And, you know, a lot of times, I immediately started with how do I collaborate with business, private, public, and civic organizations to be able to bring new opportunities to our school, our community, and our kids? I won't list all the things we did, but, you know, the work with, I immediately worked with the village, the township, the Natauasepi tribe of the, or band of the Huron Potawatomi, and worked on how can we make our little niche, south of Battle Creek, a better place for kids. We did family, I created a family literacy center for early childhood literacy and birth to five, because we needed to have some kind of focus on getting kids better and prepared for school-ready. Fast forward six years after that, well, let me tell you one other thing about that. When I got there in Athens, my kids were in school there. They were a little chagrin that I was taking the superintendency as my oldest daughter was a senior and my youngest daughter was a junior. But when I took that job, I thought, how do we chase after benchmarks in the district? And this is in 2003, 2004. And we looked around the county and we recognized Marshall Public Schools as having exemplar, well, in Calhoun County, the highest level of performing for students. So I set that as a benchmark, worked with our teachers, impacted other things in curriculum, and moved them forward. We went from the middle of the pack as a school district in 13 districts to really nipping at the heels of the leader for a period, a long period of time. And that was because of just intentionality and focus. And then, six years later, I got hired or asked to come over to Marshall Public Schools, who had just had five years of incredible financial cuts and hardship. They had declining enrollment. The climate wasn't very well. The community wasn't supporting the schools at that time. They had already turned down a bond. And, but that was the school district that had the quality, in my belief, the quality standard in our county. So I thought, well, this is great. So I went to work for them in 2009 and immediately set about the same thing I do, bringing private partner and civic organizations together, generated over a million and a half dollars in private funding for a lot of initiatives that we've done, created, you know, took our alternative education program, repurposed it, moved it into a community college campus, and said, now you're in a campus setting where you have to perform. Let's leave the drama at the door. Let's start thinking about what you have to do as non-traditional learners to get into college, post-secondary training or certification programs. And it's been a beautiful partnership ever since. On top of that, I want to talk about the last one before I go toward the question. Recently, you might have heard that Marshall was invited to be a cooperative partner with Albion Public Schools. Albion Public Schools went through an incredible difficult time in making a decision because of financials and performance, that they needed to really cut a penage off to be able to survive and keep their community-centered school. It was a courageous decision that they made. It was a difficult process for their community. But when they arrived at their final decision, then they invited Marshall to come in and be a partner with them and provide high school education for their students that live and reside in Albion. It was quite a turn. We had a two-and-a-half-month period of time to make that happen. We made it happen, long story short, and I'll talk about it later. But it was successful, still is successful. And there's other things we're doing that are just innovative work in Marshall. I don't make these changes in traditional ways. I do it through partnership. I have a vision on a regional perspective and not just what happens and what's in the best interest of the district, because ultimately what happens in the best interest of our region is going to help Marshall succeed and our kids succeed.
Randy, could you just take about five minutes to try to, if you wanted to start answering any of the first couple of questions?
Yep, that's where I'm headed.
Appreciate it, because we'll have to get on to our other questions. Thank you.
Yep. I just wanted to get a flavor of where I come from. There are essentially eight things that come to mind, and I'm just going to hit them now. We need quality teachers that are regularly evaluated fairly on how they perform and how they teach. Those are two. We need rigorous content standards and standardized state assessments that inform instructional practice in the classroom, not just evaluating the efficacy of a particular school or a district. We need to bring children to either, to earlier into the public school system on one end, especially four-year-olds. And we need to be more effective in preparing our kids for career and college-ready on the other end, as they graduate and go into the real world. We need to level the playing field in school funding so we can target additional resources in areas with the greatest need. And we don't do a very good job of doing that, discerning, discriminating funding for those types of things. And we need to find better ways to control the proliferation of poor-performing or financially distressed schools through partnerships, collaborations, and repurposing. So let me offer a few details just to hit that. High-quality programs mean good partnership between public schools and institutions of higher learning. And the key that I think there is be very stringent about the requirements to enter into a program to begin with. Make sure that you have, that the student-teachers have a longer opportunity to practice in the classroom through partnerships with public schools, so that they can have peer review, peer feedback, peer development, and all that before they get certified, before they graduate, and before they show up at my table interviewing for a teaching position. With that kind of a foundation and holding higher, institutions of higher learning accountable for their output, so how well is the quality of the teacher that they're churning out, and how well are they doing in our schools and hallways? With that foundation, we create a clear performance evaluation system. It's crucial. I love the fact that we did it. It allows, it forces every administrator across the board to see every teacher in a very deep dive every year. I think that's great. I think what's not great is that we don't have the flexibility sometimes in applying some of the characteristics and objectives that we have identified uniquely in our district to hold teachers accountable if we use the same-size-fits-all approach. I do think the standards need to be there, the application needs to be there, but we need a little more flexibility so teachers and schools can operate in evaluating what's important to them, as well as what's important to the state. We have to establish rigorous state standard, state student assessment system that utilizes a standardized assessment over time and hold on to those assessments as long as we can. In the recent spring assessment that we're implementing coming up, we've given up the cohort. And when I, you know, when an evaluator sees a three-, four-, and a five-year cohort that I can actually take a look at to find out if my kids are closing the gap with that same group of kids over time, and whether they're elevating their performance, I love it. But we gave that up because we had to. You know, no fault of the State Department of Education. They were responding to the federal requirements and so forth, and to the legislature of the state of Michigan. However, we need to get back to that. We need to recreate those cohorts with real information that actually just doesn't evaluate schools but informs instruction. We need to bring our four-year-olds into the fold. I know that we're talking about universal pre-K for all. I think we need to bring them in under the foundation allowance that supports every four-year-old being involved in a process, along with fifth graders, too, that focuses on fine growth and visual motor skill development, health and well-being and nutrition, focuses on social skill development, how to play nice in the sandbox, those types of things, before we start pushing curriculum down onto the four- and five-year-olds. We need to get that base where they're introduced to reading, they're expanding their literacy, they know how to do routines and those types of things, and they have the fine and gross motor skill development to be able to pull that off. Introduce them the key concepts, but certainly don't push the rigor that far down that we forget that these kids are kids. And we need to have that approach that's appropriate for them. And that would help economically by providing childcare or daycare at a younger age for working families. Maintain high academic standards for coherent K to, pre-K to 13 curriculum. Allow STEM curriculum at all grade levels. Career cruising at fifth, by eighth grade, and making sure that that's fundamental into their educational development plan. And create a variety of pathways for kids in high school to be able to get career and college-ready. And those are very similar objectives, by the way. You know, what we want out of our kids for 21st century skills is what the manufacturer of AutoCam and Marshall wants, as well as Michigan State University wants as kids come in and enter that world. Then I would say, and I have to say, replace the cap on charters in cyber schools. We should differentiate our funding and make sure that that's differentiated for cyber schools and online learning from that of LEAs, because it costs more to do LEA work. We need to make sure we have human responsibilities to that, to the online learning, so that we have proctors and interventions or interactions and engagement around online learning and not just leave them in front of a computer. We should let the taxpayers in the district vote for authorizing a charter within their boundaries before implementing, not just rely on others outside the district to make that decision for the taxpayers in that community. Because every time you open a charter school, they draw tax dollars off of what's going on with the public school system. I will get to what's the efficacy of charter schools, but we, why aren't we asking the voters? Why aren't we asking them to give approval to bring something like that into their communities? You asked for me to describe what I would do with the Board and the superintendent position for effective education or making educational progress in Michigan. I've got to start with any systemic educational progress must be tied to a broad vision offered by this Board. And it's, and you have to be relevant in that process. You have to have a very clear vision that is going to drive the conversation, the dialogue around public education in Michigan. We should not be chasing the next best idea. We should use proven, research-based interventions and processes for public education to improve achievement and performance outcomes. And then stay the course long enough until we get results. You know, if we start shopping around and moving too quickly, we're not able to be able to have sustained growth and sustained change. As a superintendent, I will work with the Board on governance, shared decision-making and consensus, and the establishment of broad guidelines and policies that foster and support productive leadership. We will regularly use data and metrics to see how we're doing on those performance levels. This will be reported to the Board. I will always recognize this Board as the Board that I answer to. I am your one employee, and that, together, we answer to the stakeholders and the children of the state.
Thank you very much, Randy. As you know, we've got about 20 questions, and I'll give you a chance to elaborate on other points I know you want to make and ask you about specific things that we're interested in. So I think Cassandra has the first question.
Can you describe and offer examples of your successful experience in improving education and learning outcomes for students? And if you've already, Jen didn't say this, but you've probably already elaborated on some of this, so if you feel like you're just being redundant, don't feel like you have to...
We will note.
Yeah.
Well done.
Thanks, Sandra. Well, one important thing was, in Athens, recognizing that we weren't using strategies like writing across curriculum. And in and of itself, that was one of the best interventions we could do over a period of time to increase our writing scores, which we were able to do. In Marshall, we use the learning design model, which is a backwards design to approach an instruction. You know, what are the enduring understandings and questions kids have to accomplish? What are we going to use to be able to demonstrate that the kids are able to understand that? So what kind of substantive, informative assessments are we using? Before we even get to the point of what do I need to do as a teacher to deliver that? That's a huge vehicle for us for school improvement. We use that along with other things like data conferencing, data mining, PLCs or professional learning communities, having teachers and peers evaluate each other's work. And we've done that in our two focus schools. We have a elementary focus and a middle school focus. And we're making improvements and great strides in math and reading in regards to closing the gap. When you introduced social studies and science, that kind of threw us for a little bit of a loop. But, you know, apparently this year, we're going to have a hiatus from worrying about that, and we're going to continue to work on the improvements we're making. So those are some of the things that we've done that have improved performance and instruction in the classroom.
Thank you. Michelle?
Hi. How has your past experience otherwise prepared you for this position?
Okay, so you want to know, do I have the scope to be able to handle this job?
Would you transfer it over?
Well, you know, I've got to tell you, I've gone from, in a quick little vignette I gave you about my journey, I've sat across the table from troubled parents and troubled kids, looked them in the eye and made change. I've worked with family systems. I've gone up to implementing new and unique programs and designed those to make them successful. I've gone to a central administrative position that supervised programs over across two states. I've worked with a country of Denmark to work with them on helping them see things differently about program evaluation. At first, they thought I was in there to cut their jobs, and I had to convince the trade unions, no, this is to sustain your jobs. This is to demonstrate the great work you're doing so that you can then go back and show your worth to the government and continue your funding. Every single time I've gone into a new position, including superintendent positions, the complexity has increased. The need to collaborate and to partner with broader and broader scopes of our circles of entities in private, public, and civic have increased. And I've operated on all of those avenues fairly well. I think it's been fairly successful.
Thank you.
So I'm ready for this.
Okay.
Richard, you've got the next question.
We've given some examples already, but what additional examples can you offer of success in organizing and moving disparate stakeholders outside interests and your own stamp around a shared vision for educational improvement? And do you have any further ideas as to how you'd go about such an effort if you were to receive this position?
Yeah, I'm going to use an example from my current district, because it's, and I'll do it really quick. I wanted to push the envelope with our district about equity and access. We're a very middle, upper-middle-class community. We have three, what they call neighborhood schools, that parents felt like if they moved to the neighborhood, they deserved to go to that school. And of course, the most recent one that was built is the most attractive. However, the one that's been an old, an old school, neighborhood school for a long time, is actually up for National Blue Ribbon Distinction. So I looked at that and said, okay, one of the schools is a focus school. The other two are doing really, really well. One was at the 93rd percentile, one was at the 89th percentile in the top-to-bottom list in the state. However, one, the one that was focused was 55%, 56% free and reduced lunch. They were a focus school. Their class sizes were smaller because people didn't want to go to that school building, and they were going to the other ones. So what I said is, we're going to restructure and what we call redesign our elementaries to be center-based at grade levels instead of K-5 in all three. I got a big pushback on that. I mean, we did our research. We traveled around, looked at eight different districts in the state that have done this already. We asked what works, what doesn't work, what would you do differently? I took parents with us when we did that. I took administrators, the whole nine yards. I went around and did a lot of public forums, and I survived that process because people are passionate about what happens with their kids and their schools. So what I did is, what you do is, when you have a vision that you have to get to and you're incorporating people and you're being extremely transparent, the great thing about transparency is people know what you're thinking. The bad thing about transparency is people know what you're thinking. So, you know, you have to present it, though, and then you have to modify, and you have to work and negotiate and get to a closer approximation of making progress and moving the needle. And so instead of going to restructuring, I said this year, and I told everybody, look, it's not off the table. We're still going to have this conversation. But in the meantime, what we learned is, we had to relocate our transportation hub for safety and efficiencies. I wanted to balance class size across grade level across three buildings. I wanted to balance class size across grade level across three buildings. It's not fair for one to have 29 kids in one class and 22 kids in another in the same fifth grade level. I wanted to make sure all the unique things that one building did, all kids at that grade level got to experience. So our immersion in the Binder Park Zoo program was only one school because one energetic teacher, much like Melody, created an opportunity for that to happen. So I said, that's not fair. There's two other school buildings that need to experience that same program. So we centralized those efforts. All of our kids now at grade level have the same experiences. Class sizes are modified down and balanced. The free and reduced lunch numbers in our focus school have been reduced to under 50 percent, and the free and reduced lunch numbers in our other two buildings have increased by eight percent each. So we're trying to close that disparity and then making sure that the resources are applied appropriately where we have the highest risk. So to answer your question, Richard, I think it's about inclusion, it's about transparency, it's about willing to be wrong, or at least willing to step off of your position, and then finding close approximations and moving the needle forward. You don't want to move it backwards. So as long as you move it forward, it's a win-win.
Thank you. Eileen?
Hi.
Eileen?
Thank you. One of the most important tasks of the superintendent is developing policies and a strategic plan for improving education with the State Board of Education, and then advancing it effectively with the governor, the legislature, and educational interest groups outside the board. How would you describe your experience and approach in doing this successfully? And how would you work with differences in vision, direction, and expectations held by legislators, the governor, and the State Board of Ed?
Wow. Big question. I think it starts with research-based coherent vision that you have established as a board, and I have helped you do that. I think that needs to be aligned with what our efforts are with our state standards, and that the board has to be 100% behind it, not just consensus, but 100% behind your vision. Because if you don't believe it in your heart, it's really hard for us to get that conversation going. We may disagree with how we achieve that vision, but we have to make sure that that vision leaves no doubts. We have to be, you know, I am always optimistic, and sometimes people might call me naive, but I'm not naive enough to think that we're going to pull the governor's office and the legislature and the board and other stakeholders in education together and hold hands and sing kumbaya. It's going to be really, really important for us to at least bring people together and have the dialogue. And I think out of dialogue comes options and opportunity. And like I said, moving the needle is really incredibly important. I want to, I want to just take a, give a shout out to Governor Snyder and the summit that I went to last, last week. Melody, by the way, you did an outstanding job. Just wonderful.
Thank you.
Here's the deal with that. It was brilliant, and I think Mike even said it, but it was brilliant that Governor Snyder sought to bring education and economics together in one room. And he, and his charge with us was, don't have the nice conversation. Leave here with action. And that's the kind of approach I take when I sit down with a collaborative group. It's more like, not if we can do this, it's, okay, this is what we have to do. How are we going to accomplish it? And what do we need to get that taken care of? And I think when we have those conversations with that attitude and that approach, we're going to find that we're moving the needle at least some part. And hopefully, we'll see a lot more advancement in our expectations of student achievement and success than we've had in the past.
Thanks.
Thank you, Randy. Kathy?
Different people have different ideas of what public education is for. And what do, what do you think of the important and fundamental purposes of public education?
Well, I gave you about eight when I started. So let me just, let me just pick the three priorities for you. I think the alpha is bringing four-year-olds into the fold. I think that's really critical. And we have to create a learning environment for those kids and our five-year-olds, as well as honoring developmental stages and developmental growth in kids, and prepare them better for the curriculum that they're going to be having to address in their next 12 to 13 years. I think the omega is about really, truly creating better pathways for our kids in high school. I'm all for rigid standards or rigorous standards. I'm not for rigid application of that. I think we have to find room to allow kids to find themselves in the search that they're going for career and college ready, and have the resources available to make that happen. And then I got to go back to teacher prep, teacher training, teacher support, and all those types of things, because teachers are the key to success. And they are also, if you have, unfortunately, a very low-performing teacher, can limit a child's successes in their future for a long period of time if they go through one or two years of poor, poor instruction. So those three are my priorities, Kathleen.
Thank you.
Lupe, speak to this.
Okay. Are you ready for mine, Randy?
I am.
All right. Okay, please speak to the issues in what, in what policies, practices, and our actions are important to pursue in order to improve, which you just talked about, teacher and educator preparation, quality, support, morale, very important, and effectiveness.
Well, again, starting with entrance qualifications for teachers into a teaching learning or a teaching-training program is important. You know, it's been said that anybody can get into a teaching degree in the state of Michigan, and I just, I don't think that's, I don't think it's accurate, but I also don't think it's right if people feel that way. So what is our standard for people that want to become an educator? Teacher-training programs with, like I said, longer teaching, higher teaching requirements, longer opportunity to practice their trade while they're under the training status through partnerships with public schools is important. A more rigorous or a very rigorous certification process that takes time to get certification. Ongoing peer-to-peer professional development is really important, and coaching is really important in the classroom. Teachers respond to teachers. And, you know, I think we know how to teach and educate kids in the state of Michigan. I just don't think a lot of times we give, give ourselves the opportunity to do so. You know, we're always coming in with a lot of change and so forth. I think I might be guilty of that, or at least some of my teachers might think, not another one. I had to promise them, not another initiative this coming year. Let's hunker down and take care of business. On top of that, I'd say embrace the Teach to Lead initiative. We just had the first National Leadership Lab from the U.S. Department of Ed in Marshall, Michigan, in our middle school. And what was good is because I didn't have anything to do with that. I got invited into the process after my four teachers who demonstrated really great initiative and commitment over last summer to unpack data in a proactive way before our most-at-risk kids came into school. They demonstrated that at a, at a national conference, got picked. We got selected in 11 days. I did a, I put together a forum for the federal government and for Arne Duncan's office about empowering teachers to be leaders in the reform. And, you know, Melie, I, you know, what you've done and what you've said about your friend and how both of you create a learning environment within the classroom where kids are engaged and connected, so that they're responsible to be, or to be responsible partners in the educational process, I think is really outstanding. I think when we do more of that with teachers and elevate them to that status, they're going to, they're going to do great things. Provide teachers with more resources, and I got to tell you, time is the biggest one. Time is the biggest one. We eat up time all the, all the time. We eat up time in the, in the classroom and during the school day, and we have to carve out better opportunities for our teachers to get together. Yesterday, we did a delayed or early release, which we do six times a year to be able to allow our teachers to get together for professional learning communities, for peer-to-peer training and observation. And then I want to say, effective and engaged performance evaluations will help morale. And if the evaluation, performance evaluation system also identifies a career ladder for teachers, instead of trying to just incentivize if you're highly effective, you know, or incentivize if you're ineffective, although you have to have that, you have to be able to discern who are your good teachers and who are the teachers that need further training or need helped out in a decision to leave the profession, you need to have that system. But teachers are pushing back about incentivizing performance. They don't feel it's right in the culture in which they're creating peer-to-peer environments. What I'd like to see, though, is having a career ladder where novice teachers come in, and you can grow to be an exemplar teacher. And part of that requirement for exemplar teacher is that you have a commitment and obligation to impact positively the teaching and learning environment in that school. And you demonstrate that, not because of the pain that's associated with it, but because of the status that you achieve. And of course, compensation can then mirror that and support that kind of a model. So there's things like that, Lupe, that I think I would encourage that would increase morale, increase involvement and engagement of our teachers.
Thank you.
Pam?
Good morning.
Good morning.
What is the role of accountability systems in public education, and what else has to go along with accountability systems to improve learning?
Well, Pam, high rigor is important, behind the learning standards that we use. The standards have to be very clear, clearly articulated, well, first off, rigorously created and clearly articulated, so that when we communicate that across the state, everybody's on the same page. We know exactly what we want to accomplish for kids. We certainly need Michigan standards, and if these are aligned with other states, even better. And once you agree on the standards, they become the roadmap for all of our schools to operate. It makes the assessment process a lot more viable and useful and valid, because you're actually measuring then apples to apples. And when you have everybody performing out of the same standards and trying to accomplish the same objectives, and you're evaluating that, automatically what percolates up are the dynamics that demonstrate to you things that impede that success for kids, like the issues of children of color and how well our kids of color are performing versus their peers and cohorts, like kids that are economically disadvantaged, or kids that come from trauma or stressed families. Those things, we assume impact, but we can't necessarily measure until we have a really good, strong standard system and assessment system. And when you use the assessment outcomes to evaluate schools, I think that's fine. I like the top-to-bottom list. I think that's probably the best thing that I can hold on to. I'm not really high on the color system, just got to tell you. But I like the top-to-bottom list. It helps me to look at how I'm doing with, with peers, but I also like, I really like being able to look at that catchment group of schools around the, around the state that are like my building, and I can see really apples to apples on how I'm performing relative to them. My recommendation is to fix the state assessment system as we currently have it in place. You know, you're giving me an opportunity to sit at tables, so let me tell you. And I've told Mike this, and I've told the staff this. I met with them with a couple superintendents from Calhoun. I know that we had to have a state assessment. It is not a standardized assessment. It might be criterion reference to other instruments, but it's not standardized. So we have to stop calling it standardized assessment right now until we get one, all right? Secondly, it's not going to do anything to inform instruction in my buildings, in my classrooms, because we're going to get a one-shot deal, and then it's going to change next year. And unless we have it over a period of time, it's not that useful for us. We'll unpack the criterion. We'll take a look at how our kids are doing, so it may inform instruction, but it's not the best it can be. And I know it's not our fault, but we have to get there quickly. If I'm superintendent in the state, we have got to get to that quicker. And we have to implement something that's going to be viable and long-ranging, and something we can say that we are invested in and will hold on to. Right now, we have teachers chasing this assessment and trying to figure out, how are we going to get our kids best prepared? And I got to tell you, I love the fact that it's electronic. I think it's great. I opted out all my buildings. I did that because you can't, you can't implement something like that if all of your students aren't computer literate in the skill sets that are required at the grade level. And we have not, with diligence and intentionality, proved that that's the case across the board in all buildings. My colleagues around the state of superintendents are scared to death, a lot of, a lot of them about this assessment coming up. And so I stayed with paper and pencil because we have a very sensitive situation in Marshall. Marshall and Albion both, you know, we're going to have our kids assessed, but there's a whole lot of folks out there waiting to see, how is the Albion students taking down the, the test performance of our kids? It's just a mask for other conversations, but it, it's a sensitive time, and people pay attention to what happens, and the public pays attention to what happens to the outcomes of this assessment. And you're also administering this assessment in multiple ways, so how can you possibly compare one building to another? If one, one over here is using electronic, one over here is using paper and pencil, one over here is using iPad, one's using Chrome. It's a varied way of administering. I know we had to do it. I just got to tell you, that's not the way. We can do better as a state of Michigan.
I know. You were, you're speaking to several of the issues that are in the next question Eileen's got for you. So Eileen, maybe there's some pieces of that question you want to...
I think there will be.
...focus on.
Michigan, like other states, has seen policy debates about the nature and utility of state learning standards and assessments, which I think you've discussed pretty well, including the Common Core standards in math, language arts, and in updating science and social studies standards, which we have coming up. What's the role of standards and assessments in improving student learning? And I believe you've addressed that, but you may want to elaborate. And where do you recommend we should go in our policies regarding standards and assessments?
Well, I've heard the debate about Common Core, and it's almost been a, you know, it's one of those words you don't use in public very much anymore. I, you know, I think, at least in Michigan, let's just start with Michigan, even if we're loosely aligned or aligned closely to Common Core like Florida is, that at least gets us a step in the right direction. Whatever our standards need are identified to be in the state of Michigan, we have, as I said before, they have to be strong, rigorous, relevant to what our kids are learning in school. And we have to stick with them, and we have to make them broad-based and make sure everybody's performing to that level. I believe that if you do get everybody on the same page, even from state to state, it would alleviate a lot of the directions going nationally. I mean, you know, when I sit there and hear that Wisconsin is, you know, kids are scoring nine, 29 on average in the ACT, I don't know if that's it, but it's high, versus ours that are around 19 or 20, I get a little concerned until I find out that they don't assess everybody in the ACT. Only those kids that choose to go and want to go to college. So, you know, again, there's apples to oranges that don't make sense. So if we, if we do standards and we have a viable assessment that's standardized, that we stick with over a period of time, we rebuild the cohorts, all of that is going to be wonderful for our schools, because right now, we won't be chasing what's going to come up next year. We'll know what's going to come up next year, and we'll be able to unpack the data like we've done in the MEAT, even though we changed the cut scores and all that. We have been able to use that MEAT in a way to unpack that data to the individual student level and help use that information to design what that child's intervention plan is going to be. And when I'm sitting there pushing the issue about differentiated instruction, K-12, and in particular, at the high school, because that's the way you connect with kids, we need to have data that's going to drive that. And if the state can't provide that, districts are going to have to be left up to their own devices to look at how they're going to do that internally. And they probably should anyways. So in, in forms instruction.
Thank you, Randy. Cassandra?
There have been a number of so-called education reform ideas advanced in recent years, and which of these do you think are worthy of exploration, and which would you recommend against?
What I'm for absolutely is career... What I'm for absolutely is career and technical opportunities for kids. You know, I'm trying to figure out in Marshall, and I think a lot of districts are doing this, or maybe have already figured this out. How do you work within the Michigan merit core to be able to create opportunities in the high school level, so that every ninth grader that comes through my door goes through employability skills in the world of work training, has an opportunity for applied arts, hands-on learning, gets a chance to look at consumer math? Because we have employers out there that say, these kids can't even do a checkbook. So what are we going to do to be able to bring some of those fundamental, basic opportunities for kids, so that, and along with their STEM experience, can then say, you know, this is the path I want to take? And then be in a position with school counselors that actually supports that path and identifies, here's what you need to do to be able to get to where you want to get. So I'm a strong opponent for that. Some of the reforms that I don't value, oh. You know, I'm going to go back to what I said before. I don't value pushing high stringent learning standards into the kindergarten level. I think there's got to be a benchmark for that, but it's got to be taken into consideration what kids do and what they need to do. I'm telling you, in my experience, if you're not addressing the kids' developmental stages, their growth, their physical and emotional and mental health, or intelligence, as you go through the process, and get a foundation and a base for them to be ready to learn, we're pushing the problem further and further up, and kids find that gap starting to create. And we've got to close that gap. What I do know about our gap in Marshall, kids come in with a gap of 20% to 23% difference, and that gap pretty much stays the same even though we elevate all shifts. And the good work about that needs to be in the early elementary. So when we say that we're not going to invest in early elementary, birth to five, I think that's a short-sighted view. So I go to those things about what I would support. I don't think I probably answered the full question, but I've seen a lot of reform. I think the high-stakes testing makes sense if we're talking about high school, so that there's some levels of high school diplomas and certifications for being career-ready. I think those things would be great. I think high stakes in a lower level don't make sense to me. I think the idea of trying to hold back and retain third graders that don't read proficiently at grade level is short-sighted. I think that decision needs to be made between the teacher and the parent. So, you know, those kind of reforms, I really kind of go, ooh.
Thanks, Randy. Richard?
Yeah, I appreciate your highlighting the difference between preschool versus elementary school. A lot of people don't realize those are two different operations altogether.
You're verging on editorializing.
You are editorializing.
Describe the role of technology generally, the place of virtual blended and cyber learning and education. How can technology and these tools, opportunities, be used to improve learning and educational outcomes?
When I started as superintendent in Athens, I inherited a budget that had zero dollars in the technology line item, antiquated equipment. So the fact that I made a number of trips in the school bus to Colorado Springs to pick up computer zoning through the military tells you how much investment I have in technology. We, by the way, brought in about $1.2 million of equipment through that program over three years. It's great. So you have to have updated and viable technology, both for teachers to do their job and kids to learn. You can see me with an iPad. I think this is the most incredible instrument I've seen come along, and I'm sure I'm going to be, that'll be paled in comparison in four or five years. But having kids engage in apps that support and encourage and reinforce learning is great. Having them be able to demonstrate their comprehension and their work publicly through iPod and different things like that is great, because it doesn't just rely on subjective one-to-one assessment between the teacher and the student, but kids see your work and say, that was great. I think that those kind of things are wonderful enhancements in the classrooms. I think technology is a great equalizer when it comes to differentiated instruction. It's difficult when you have 28 kids in a classroom to differentiate your approach and instruction without using technology. Technology affords you the opportunity to find really good programs that can help that child continue to learn and bring them up at a faster pace, and it translates also, hopefully, into the home or into other environments in which kids can get access to. So it expands the walls of the classroom and the building to allow us to have more access for learning. I think dual enrollment, blended learning, flipping the classroom, all those kinds of technologies or techniques are wonderful. It adds more flexibility, puts the onus on the kids a little bit more about doing their learning in regards to the content, and then coming back into classrooms and having the opportunity for the teacher to help them practice and then shape what their misunderstandings are or how well they can perform. So our investment in technology is critical.
Michelle?
Okay. This one's got several parts. What experience do you have with special education? What do you think the direction and agenda for special education in Michigan needs to be to improve education and employment outcomes? And how would you work to ensure special education students, their parents, and stakeholders are included in the process of improving special education?
So let me start from a personal perspective, and I've been married to a special ed teacher for 30 years.
Okay.
When you, you know, you have a lot of conversations.
Say no more.
Yeah. You have a lot of conversations about special ed. In fact, she's in the audience today. I think it starts with inclusion for special ed in public education, and not from just the requirement of having the kids in general ed classrooms 80% of the time. You know, that's a benchmark, and it goes up to 85%. Inclusion, what I'm talking about, is helping students with IEPs engage socially with kids, like our LINKS program that we have, making sure that these kids are viable in the educational environment, that the services that they're doing are to support them to perform in public, in the general ed classroom, not to pull them out, you know, not to keep them out of the learning environment that their other peers are experiencing, but give them supports within the classroom to elevate. I think the IEP process is great because of the involvement. Families and other caregivers and educators need to be involved in that process. It gives a roadmap if truly done well. I do have some concerns about the lack of resources sometimes limiting our ability to deliver on what those interventions are that are identified in an IEP. So, you know, we have to keep supporting financially the special ed services. I can tell you to, and I, you know, I'm probably going to out my wife a little bit, but it's difficult on all the documentation that you have to do. So I know that that's critical, but a lot of times, it keeps teachers from teaching. And they want to teach. They want to help kids elevate beyond some of the limitations they have when they come in. So how do we create a good statewide system that helps teachers in the special ed arena document and report out what's required, maintain all the reporting that's required on the annuals and the reviews and so forth? How do we get a system in place like that? Well, it works through the ISDs normally, but the state needs to have their eye on that prize as well. We have to figure out a way that we can support not only the ISDs, but the individual districts and be able to do a better job with that. The other thing I think is really important with special ed is transitioning. You know, it used to be that a lot of kids kind of decertify by choice or whatever when they get into high school. Not so much anymore. Kids are wanting to keep their services. Parents are wanting to keep the label so that they can have an obligation of transitioning successfully into adulthood. So that takes community involvement. It takes collaboration with other stakeholders. It takes an intentionality in the high school to better prepare kids for their transitions. It takes career training, exploration in regards to that, and finding the right level of career that our kids can get involved in. I got to tell you, a young man that was on the autism spectrum was valedictorian of our district three years ago. So we have to stop discounting what these kids can provide and what they're capable of, and find that key that unlocks their potential and their success. As far as involvement, it's already pretty involved. We have advocates. We have families that are really more and more becoming very aware of what their rights or regulations are in special ed. You just need to have leadership that understands it, leadership that supports it, and that we don't fight those issues. We find ways to make it work.
Thank you, Randy. Kathy?
Yeah. What do you think is the role of school choice and charter schools in improving learning and education?
Well, there's a place for those. I think when you have a system that is so broken that there's no way out, then I think charter schools, in particular nonprofit charter schools, can do a great job. I think we need to look at the profit charter schools very carefully. Not that there aren't some really great ones out there, but we have to be able to assess that and hold them accountable to their performance. Let me tell you, if I get on my soapbox about school of choice, it might take a little while, but John, I'll try to be brief. I like school of choice for parents that are moving kids around because it's necessary, whether it's a traumatic social experience that the kids have, that they just can't stay in that school, they need flexibility to move where they need to move so they can feel connected and healthy enough to be able to not have those obstacles in their way or their learning. And I support that. I sign kids out of my district if something like that happens, to go to another district, even after the Fourth Wednesday count. But I've also seen school of choice decimate urban school districts and small rural school districts. And what happens is, only those parents that are economically mobile can move their kids out of that district. And so what they do is they take the funding with them, and they leave kids that are stuck because they don't have the mobility to be dealing with a sub-par, low financially-supported school district that is on a death spiral. And a lot of times, sadly enough, that happens with our economic disadvantage in children of color. And we have to fix that. We have to do something different. We have to look at that closely. This board needs to figure out, what's our position? That would be one of my questions, actually. What is our position on school of choice? And what kind of vision do we want to give for public schools in Michigan to allow us to afford those opportunities for kids when it's right? And like I said, with charters, I'm not against charters in situations that require that. I am against charters that just choose to crop up without the public knowing that it's coming, without the taxpayers knowing that they're going to divert some of their money over to the system and they didn't ask for it. I'm against that. I think the other piece of that is, we have got to hold charters accountable, just like we hold public school LEAs. And they have to be publicly reported out next to everybody else, so that they can use that information to improve instruction in the classroom.
Great, Randy. We've got about seven more questions, and we want to make time at the end for whatever you want to say and questions from you. So Pam, you've got the next question.
And you've kind of alluded to answers to, somewhat to the answers to these questions, but what experience have you had in successfully turning around underperforming schools? And what do you see as effective approaches to school turnaround?
Yeah, I have alluded to some of that, but I do have, let me see. Well, you know, because I'm going to put my hat back on as research and evaluator, because truly, you have to create a culture of evaluation and discovery in those schools. You know, a lot of times, those schools get identified and they get afraid, and they get kind of paralyzed to be able to move forward on any effective change, because they think they're trying to meet the grade or meet the requirement. The reality of it is, if you create a culture of evaluation and discovery, and you empower teachers to be a part of that reform, they're going to find things that you didn't even think about. And they're going to find ways to approach those things systemically within that building. So I think that's first and foremost that I would suggest. We have long referred to this as a professional learning community, but then you unpack that label, you're going to find the teachers and administrators working together in intentional ways that's powerful. And you do that through data mining, data conferencing, teacher learning groups, peer-to-peer work, observations in the classrooms from one teacher to another, sharing lesson plans, common assessments at grade level, so that across our three buildings or wherever you're at, at grade level, everyone's sharing about how we're assessing mathematics and how, you know, because we're all on the same standards, and we should be on the same curriculum, and we should be on the same pace. And if we're not, we're making adjustments, but we're also assessing the same thing. So why are we giving different assessments in different classrooms or different buildings at grade level? You know, so what we're trying to do is make sure we create a system that allows that to happen, and that helps change, or helps turn around schools to perform better. I think this whole concept of peer review is really critical. There has been a climate, it takes trust. It takes trust in your colleagues to share your lesson plans. It's like, well, that's my intellectual knowledge. No, it's not. You need to demonstrate how you do that to help your colleagues and help yourself. You're going to get some feedback from, I'm sure you've taken feedback, Melly, from other teachers about how to do it better, how to do it differently, or how to reach these kids that I can't just reach by doing the same thing I've done over and over again. So I think the climate and the culture that you create and turn around schools is critical to that success.
Lupe?
Okay. As the state superintendent of public instruction, you would manage and be accountable for the performance of the Michigan Department of Education. What are directions for change and improvement in the work of the department? And/or what process would you use to learn how to understand, identify, and make such improvements?
Well, I wouldn't be presumptuous enough to walk into the Michigan Department of Education and tell them how they need to change. I think I would need to immerse myself in each of the departments and their responsibilities and understand what they believe their mission and their vision is for that particular department, and how it relates to the overall vision that this board has. And that would take us some time, I think. You know, it's not that you forget about the things that you have to move forward, because you're always working to move forward, but you're also always working to understand the department. I looked on the website, and I, you know, wow, there's a lot of departments, a lot of things, a lot of interventions, a lot of responsibility for the department. I get that. I think you've already surrounded yourself with great people in that department, and we have to let them continue to do their job. And at some point, I'm going to weigh in on that, and I'm going to influence that conversation. And so will you, through me, in what you do and your vision about what's going to go on for public education in Michigan. I work well with department leaders. I give them a lot of opportunity to function. But I also, they know that I'm in their camp. They know that I got their back. They understand that I'm invested and engaged, and that I want to know what they're doing and how that delivers results that we're looking for.
Thank you, Randy. Cassandra?
What do you see as the role of the superintendent and the Department of Education with local school districts and intermediate school districts?
Well, I can tell you, a great experience. Shout out to MDE, Jerry Lynn Williams Harper, the superintendent from Albion, and I were invited up. Linda Forward did an act- Well, I can tell you, a great experience. Shout out to the MDE, Jerry Lynn Williams, Harper, the superintendent from Albion and I were invited up. Linda Forward did an outstanding job for us, invited us up. When we thought about doing this, closing the high school and doing a collaborative, I think this is the first time the state of Michigan where 12, K-12 became a K-8, and had an intentional cooperative agreement with their contiguous district. So the Michigan Department of Ed didn't really know what to do. And we would ask them, well, what's, you know, well, this is unique. Well, they invited us up along with board members, staff members, and even community members to come in and sit down with them and talk about this unique opportunity. And they had, every department had at that meeting that had any kind of impact on this discussion. Totally impressed. Mike Flanagan stepped in, totally impressed. And they talked about not why you can't do it, but how are we going to get it done? What changes need to be taken in regards to how we see and how we represent the Albion School District now, and how does that impact on state and federal funding? You know, what do we do about the fact that they're a block school with all free and reduced lunch coming over to a school district that is not? What are we going to do about title dollars that are established by the community in which you live and don't follow at this point? Maybe no child left behind, reauthorization's going to change that, but title dollars don't follow the kid. But the kid still has the issues and still has the needs. So what do you do with that? And thankfully, we were able to advocate with our legislators and the governor, and we got a special appropriations out of his budget for $350,000 to support the transition and the lack of title funding for that. So for me, the Department of Ed did what they need to do. And that is to be a resource, a problem solver, a supporter for innovation, a gatekeeper a little bit to be able to say, hey, you can't go down that path, this is the reason why, but be able to explain it in such a way that we understand it so we're not curtailing creativity. I think they should do that. And a lot of interventions or implementation of services need to go through the ISDs to get to the local district. I also think the department needs to have more contact with individual districts. It doesn't need to pass through the ISD all the time. You know, we need to have those opportunities. And we had Michigan Department of Ed representatives down at the Learning Lab last week, and it was great to see. So in my view, it's not a trickle-down, it's more of a level conversation and how can we be of assistance and cooperate.
Thanks, Randy. We have about 20 more minutes to give you the full time we're giving everybody, and we've got four more questions, and then we want some time at the end. So, Michelle?
And this is a two-sentence question, I think. Okay, yeah. And number 16. What has been your success as an educational leader in collaborating and partnering with the business, labor, and broader community? Please discuss specific partnerships or achievements due to these partnerships that have developed as a result of your leadership.
Well, that's, I guess that's how you probably describe my leadership anyways. So let me start with saying, from the manufacturing, industrial, and business base, I looked around the state and we had a company that came in and built a new plant in Marshall. I was on the LFA board and the Economic Development Board and all these things. And when I talked to AutoCam, they said, hey, we got a great program that's going on Kent County with Coopersville. It's called the AMP program. So I went up to the Manufacturing's Vision or Talent 2020 and listened to all the manufacturers in Lansing about why our schools aren't delivering the kind of workforce they need. I met with their CEO for AutoCam and I said, I want you to think about a pre-AMP program in Marshall, not just after kids graduate, but while the kids are still in school. And so we've embarked on that initiative. We formed a three-district collaborative with Marley, Marshall, and Albion to work in reaching out to manufacturing base. We're creating the MEPP program that allows our juniors to commit to the manufacturing program for the following year, in which they use their transcripts to demonstrate skill sets in manufacturing, then are going to be interviewed by the consortium of employers that we've rounded up in the table. And not necessarily give them a job, but certainly a lot of kids find jobs that way. We've got two of our graduates, one from my alternative school and one from my traditional high school, that have got jobs at AutoCam and are in a training program, getting college credit paid for. I call it the scholarship program, because you can get a degree out of that, that relationship. So we do that well, and we're going to do it better. We had our first-ever career day that we had 25 local manufacturing businesses come in, and we ran all of our eighth grade or through 12th grade through that experience in one day. That was amazing. So we're trying to pique the interest through STEM and at the middle school level and through our applied arts area at our high school to get kids into the field of manufacturing work. The other thing I want to say about other entities like labor, I'm part of that conversation about whether our kids are being better prepared or ill-prepared to go out into the workforce. I'm working with workforce development and so forth. I'm on the Southwest Michigan First Initiative on the Educational Committee talking about, how can we change the corridor up and down I-94 in our six counties that are identified in that region eight? You probably saw that when it was presented. And how are we connecting better with our career centers? Like, the career center that we have in Calvin County is outstanding, and we still have an applied arts program in our high school. We offer eight applied arts courses in CAD, in metals, woods, in 3D printing, in robotics, all those types of things. The other piece of that is how do you reach out to other entities in the community? I closely work with the Huron Potawatomi Tribe in Athens to help bring counties together, the county, the township, and the village together, so that we had a police force in Athens that was regular, as opposed to waiting for the state police to roll through. No offense to the state police, but they've got a big territory to cover. There's other things that I've done in community partnerships. The Frank Center for the Performing Arts is a smaller venue, and when we built our big auditorium with our bond funds that we passed, we immediately started collaborating on how do we bring bigger venues into this house and still let the Frank Center be in charge of that. So we just brought Jeff Daniels in, who did a wonderful performance for all of our community. And that was through collaboration and partnership.
Thank you, Randy. We've got three more important questions, and then some chance to hear more. Lupe?
Yes. Okay. Michigan and Michigan schools are very diverse in terms of race, ethnicity, culture, and socioeconomic levels. Please speak to your approach and give examples of your success in supporting diverse learners and poor children to success in schools. And you have covered some of it.
Yeah, I just, you know, to be, it's one of my most important perspectives and values in public school. And the work that I'm doing with Albion and my partners over there is really good work. We've incorporated the National Equity Project to come in and help, Glasswing Healing Racism to come in and help. Because, you know, let's be honest, you know, when you're in a school district that's 97% Caucasian, and all of a sudden your profile changes to 22%, 23% children of color, there's a bit of an adjustment process that you have to go through, and teachers go, well, wait a minute. How do I have the tools in my toolbox to be able to reach out and help these kids be successful? So you have to be intentional and upfront and honest about that, and then you have to work through the process. So we've got some really good consultants that are working with us about how to develop relationships with kids that are economically disadvantaged and children of color through the differentiated instruction approach. Because think about it, that's how you do it. You meet with the kids, you understand their individual needs, strengths, and weaknesses. You create their own particular plan, but you enforce upon them that you have high expectations for their performance, and that you're going to be in it every step of the way to make sure they're successful. And that's how we do it, that's how we approach it. I think it's a, again, it's a culture-climate issue as well.
Great. Thank you, Randy. Eileen's got the next question. Remember, Eileen, that second part was a mistake and repeated a previous question, so.
The second part is a mistake?
Yeah, it repeats from a previous question. It's my mistake.
Okay. As superintendent, you'll manage Michigan Department of Education's large budget and complex organization along with federal compliance. Please describe your approach and success in managing a similar organization.
A similar organization? Well, maybe similar, but not in scope. I think, you know, one of the things I found is being a superintendent in a 900 school, a 900-enrolled school, and being a superintendent in a 2,600, 2,700-enrolled school is no different. Maybe a little more complex, but the roles and responsibilities are the same, the scope is different. And, you know, so I think when you get to the state level, I think the scope's going to be extremely different, but I think the responsibilities and roles and obligations to the kids of this state don't change. So, you know, as far as my ability to operate in larger organizations, start Commonwealth with that, with that experience I talked about, the country of Denmark was another wonderful opportunity for that. I also was a consultant for the Wayne County Department of Community Justice when they first rolled out the Managed Care Initiative and focus on how to deal with delinquent kids and kids in foster care through CMOs or care management organizations. And I oversaw the quality management of those contracts for the startup of those things. So, you know, I have scope. I do clearly understand my role and responsibilities as a superintendent, and I think I can apply that to this.
Thanks, Randy. Kathy, next to last question.
Could you give us some specific ideas of how you would judge your own effectiveness as a superintendent, and how the board, how we should evaluate your work?
Well, let's get out of being one of the lowest five states in the country in regards to children of colors' graduation rates. Let's stop being 36 out of 50. You know, let's work on that. I can't guarantee I'll take you from 36 to 1, but we're going to work towards that. We're going to move it. We've got to move the, you know, move the needle. To evaluate my experience or my performance is going to be tied to those types of benchmarks. Set some goals. I like to stretch goal. I think that always keeps, a lot of times stretch goals become evergreen. For example, with, you know, kids being proficient in third-grade reading, one of my buildings was 100% or 98% for a couple of years. One of them was 95, 94, one of them was 83. And so overall, though, we were like at 96% proficient reading by third-grade level. And we still have the goal, because it never goes away and new kids come in, you know, so it's always got to be there. So I think metrics are real important. I think how I work with the governor's office and the legislature is going to be key as well. How are, you know, you're going to judge that through, what is the tenor of those conversations when we pull them together, and other stakeholders in public education? When we sit down and really have dialogue, you're going to see whether or not we're being cooperative, whether or not we're being productive, whether or not we're heading towards action as opposed to just conversation. As Rex Snyder said, rather than just having the Midwest nice conversation, we need to have the hard conversations to be able to move and affect change. So I think you're going to know that. I look forward to the feedback that you would be able to give me as a board. You're going to get feedback, and I hope you get feedback from a 360 kind of approach, from people that you know I'm connected with and working with, and let me know what they're telling you when we sit down and evaluate. I think the other piece of it is, how are we operating as a superintendent to a board? Do you feel informed? Do you feel updated? Are we working on board governance in a way that includes everyone on the board?
Thanks, Randy. Last question. Why do you want to be superintendent of public instruction in Michigan?
Well, when I told you about my path or journey to get here, I didn't envision that I'd be sitting here at this table today. You know, someone reached out to me and said, hey, we've been hearing some things, would you consider? And I said, sure. It's not the job of being state superintendent that I'm truly interested in, it's the opportunity. And I think this allows me to impact on a broader scale, obviously, what's in the best interest of kids in this state. I think ultimately, we get evaluated, if you want to go back to that last question, on not only how we operate, how our stakeholders perceive that, how our families perceive that, and we answer to the kids and children of the state of Michigan. So for me, it's a calling. For me, it's an opportunity to truly impact on public education in Michigan. I gotta tell you, I'm a little tired of going into other arenas outside of the state and hearing how bad and low our performance is. We have great teachers. They know how to teach and educate kids. Sometimes we just have to get out of the way and let that happen, but with accountability, oversight, and resources to let that happen as well. So, you know, you asked me why I want to be state superintendent. I just think I want to have the opportunity.
Thank you, Randy. Very much appreciate your comments. We've got about five minutes since we started late, and welcome you to make points or recapitulate anything you'd like us to know about, your ability, experience, and/or ask us any questions you would like.
Well, I'd like to ask questions, if you don't mind, and then I'd like to just do a closing, so John, if you could.
No, they're too hard, no.
Well, you know, I'm interested, you know, you're a board, just like any board, right? You're elected and you sit here and you think about what's in the best interest. Truly, your scope is a lot larger. How do you work together with the, in this divisive sometimes political climate? Not that you are, but it's divisive. When you have different perspectives and so forth come together, how do you work together? And what role do you see the superintendent playing in that?
I know, historically, and certainly since I've been on the board, we've worked very hard to have really good communication with each other and across party lines, and have sought and mostly succeeded at trying to pull together and be together. I know, and be honest, when we have differences, and so most of what we've done has been to organize around important education directions, get there in a bipartisan manner, work hard at it, and usually we do. But I think it's communication and respect that we actually can, are committed to that. And we know we're not isolated from the polarized, increasingly polarized politics, but we're, we certainly are often an example that you can find common ground and come together around things that we think are important in education.
That's outstanding. So what role do you expect me to play in that?
I think you can appreciate and also, we haven't had the need for facilitating that, but where you have good ideas or observe us behaving, and you see how to help us facilitate that coming together and mutual appreciation and ideally shared decision-making, I think you're and others who have in this role who could help us and guide us, that's one of the skills that would be nice to have.
The other thing is, is when I look at the task of this board and the superintendent to address areas or pockets where, you know, kids are just being underserved, how do you put that in priority versus all the other things that you have to do to make sure all districts are functioning at the appropriate level? I mean, is that like?
I welcome others' responsibility. I think we have not done enough, and we need to look fresh at everything that we do, control, touch, and how we reorganize it to redirect whatever effective help we need, for those who have furthest to travel educationally. And that should be our priority.
Well, we do get together once a year at an annual meeting, and we review the priorities of the board, which then the superintendent can use to work with the staff in the department to make sure that the priorities and the vision that the board has set is being implemented throughout the department. And one of the top priorities that we always have is identifying those students that might be in most need of services and making sure that we are keeping them at the top of our vision.
Good. So it's a priority of your board. So that's kind of a strategic planning or at least a checkup on the strategic plan?
Correct.
Yeah. Right. Well, I'm going to let you off the hook of any other questions that I have. You know, I just want to end with, you know, making it very clear that I do want to be your next state superintendent. Sometimes we just don't say the obvious. Let me tell you the obvious. The other thing is, is I'm extremely honored that you spent the time with me to talk about this. I think it's, I never thought I'd have the opportunity and this is great. The other thing is, is I have a passion, just like any other colleague that's going to sit in this seat in front of you. We're all dedicated. We're all passionate about kids in the state of Michigan. I'm cut from a different cloth, as I said. I come from a different path to get here at this seat. I think differently sometimes. I think there's a lot of my colleagues around Southwest Michigan that are probably laughing at that comment at this point, but I do because I think it's all about finding, you know, behind every challenge that we have, you have to find the opportunities for change in a positive way. And I have colleagues that work with me all the time in other districts that believe in that. And I just don't, sometimes I think we let the system prevent us from taking courageous steps. And in my view, I don't. So I hope.
Well, Randy, on behalf of the board and all the folks caring about Michigan, thanks for putting yourself forward or responding to the call. As you know, folks who do know your work are very impressed and didn't think you could necessarily succeed as superintendent and look, view you as famously successful in a unique way. And so I would not underestimate your ability to contribute at this level as well. Certainly, it's been great to learn more. You know what you think, you know what you're doing, and it certainly shows. And I really appreciate your spending some time with us and being part of this discussion. Is your wife here or is she watching? Can you introduce her?
She is. Here's my wife, Pam.
Hi, Pam.
We're celebrating our 30th anniversary coming up March 30th.
Again, thanks so much for being willing to step forward and offer your service to Michigan. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
So we're going to start at 11:25 again, so.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.